We have the code of conduct presentation by Mr. Sivoni, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Iwanko. Or maybe not, Mr. Iwanko.
Gentlemen, before you start, Board, Mr. Iwanko is excused. He is at the lacrosse game right now, likely working the clock and the music and whatnot. So he gave me a call earlier today. I just want to make sure you knew where he was.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Ed. Like to welcome our superintendent back. Good to see him again. So we're here to present to you changes to the 2022-23 Code of Conduct. Pretty much what happens every year is our building level shared decision-making team meets and we go through it. It's typically the focus of that team and we look for any changes that we think would benefit our student body. So we do this in all three buildings. We get together and we propose changes. With that, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Lyons to share those changes with you. There really weren't that many this year, but he'll talk about the few that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. First is we would go to page 23. These are all pretty much grammatical changes. You'll see under number four, it says case-to-case basis. Now it's a case-by-case basis. And then in deciding is added down below the four and eight to four and eight, but separated. On page 24, the there was incorrect, an incorrect there. And if you go to page 26, letter E, it was instead of this letter, it's a letter. And then there's a dash and letter G. So those are all of the changes in the code of conduct. Any questions?
I think we have to meet about this for a while. Hold on.
So, so let's just, let's just go over the process a little bit too. And I, I appreciate everything you shared, Mr. Sivoni. But I think one of the reasons why there are, the changes that you're presenting are simply grammatical is because of the work that you've done in previous years, right? And the reason that it's important to review the code of conduct yearly is because circumstances change. Back in my day when I was a principal and they loved when I talk about, about my history, because I do it all the time. We didn't know what an e-cigarette was, so we had no, no need to have it in the code of conduct. We didn't know what a vape was. We had no need to put it in the code of conduct. But those things are invented and changed mostly for, I raise our dander. And I know you did a lot of work in that area, those two particular areas last year. So while it looks like the, the changes are only grammatical, the real bulk of the work in the code of conduct happens throughout the year as our administrators and our teachers and our counselors work with students and gather information to make sure that we include the correct and new information in the updated codes. So kudos to you that the changes that you're, you're recommending today are, are simple and grammatical.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we have Mrs. Feldman with the budget.
Good evening and welcome to the adoption phase of the budget presentation. We're going to talk about some scenarios and then later in the budget, I will be asking for some direction from the Board of Education. So we're going to start with the expenditures. So when we're looking at general support, that's the district office, the business office, buildings and grounds, areas like that. It's going to go up from 2,021,022, 271,000 to, from 3.8 to a little over $4 million. And you see in scenarios one, two, and three, at a 1% levy, 1.5 and a 1.75% levy. The dollars are the same for the expenditures in all the scenarios being presented tonight. So instructional, which is where we want to see our increase, this is the part that impacts the students, the mission that we're here for, is going up 694,000 from 17.3 million to a little over 18 million. Pupil transportation is going up 106,000 from 1.8 million to 1.9 million. And then our employee benefits, debt service, civic activities, which is a fitness center and building uses, and interfund transfers is going up 126,000 from 9.5 million to 9.7 million. Our total expenditures are being proposed to go up from 32,637,781 to go up 1,198,702 to 33,836,483 or a 3.67% increase. And as you see, the numbers are exactly the same whether it's a 1.95, a 2.0 or 2.13 budget. The expenditures all go from 32 million to 33 million. Revenue scenarios is where we have some differences. So this board is being asked to determine what levy percentage they would like. This is the major decision tonight if the board agrees with the proposed expenditures. Would we be asking for a 1% levy increase, which would be 151,648 in entirety for the district? And reserves would go up 340,225. So as you can see, here's your school taxes, here's your reserves. You want to watch it because as the taxes go up more, the reserve usage goes down. And that's us trying to make our savings last longer into the future. So at a 1.5% levy increase, the taxes levy would go up 227,472 and the reserve usage would only go up 264,401 from 647,210 here to 911,611 in, in a 1.5 levy increase. 1.75 levy increase goes up 265,384 and our reserves would be going up then 226,489. Again, as you can see, we're always matching the expenditures. So now we're going to look at if we raised taxes proposal number four was a 1.95 levy increase, which would increase tax levy by 295,714 and reserves would go up 196,459. A 2% levy increase would raise taxes 303,296 and reserves would go up 188,577. A 2.13 levy increase would go up 323,533 and our reserves would go up 168,340. Any questions so far?
Yeah, okay. What, what I don't, the only thing I don't understand is the higher, I, I would think logically, and it doesn't seem that I'm right, that the, the higher the, the percentage increase, shouldn't our, our reserves go up further because we don't have to dip into them?
The more money we're raising in taxes, the less money we take from our savings account.
Right, exactly. The less money we take.
Right. So if you look at 2.13%, the levy is up the highest at 15,488,000 and reserve usage is at 815,550 versus at 2% reserve usage is at 835,787.
Oh, it's a reserve usage.
Yes, yes. It's a total usage.
The other question I have, isn't this year that, that, that the, the level is supposed to be a 2.0 levy? That you, you need an extra vote if you go higher than 2.0? Is that wrong?
That is incorrect. Our calculated property tax cap levy, which determines the rate of voter authorization for the 22-23 school year was 2.13% was the maximum allowable levy limit.
So that's the maximum allowance?
Yes. It changes from year to year. So as you can see, when I look at the budget here, my revenues equal my expenditures of 33,836,483 a balanced budget. Now we're going to look at some history. So in 2012-13, the total true value of the district, which is your total assessment from the district times the equalization rate that is prepared by the New York State Office of Real Property Tax Service. So our average tax rate per thousand in 12-13 was $19.01. Now I want to jump way down to the bottom, 2020-2021. We had the exact same levy in 2020-2021 as we had in 2021-22. And yet, because of assessed values and equalization rates, we actually had a lower average tax rate per thousand. It went from 17.03 down to $16.16. It was the exact same levy, the total levy is the total amount of money that are collected from property taxes. The tax rate comes from formulas where it's divided out to be put on tax bills based on assessment. Any questions on that one? That one always seems to be very confusing because there's a lot of things in this number that are outside of the control of this Board of Education. So I wanted to talk about what would our potential tax increase be? And I took it to a $100,000 home, figuring that people, if they had a more expensive home or a less expensive home, it was the easiest divisor. So 1% levy increase is 151,648 of new tax money. The actual tax rate for 21-22 was $16.16 per thousand. The potential, and the reason it's a potential is we don't know until August what the equalization rate and they don't know until July, we don't get any information back on what assessments will be because people still have an opportunity to grieve their assessments, I believe, up through May. So if we went based on last year's numbers of that value of the district, we would go from $16.33 per thousand, up 17 cents per thousand from the $16.16 in 21-22. Multiply that times 100 and it's $17 a year per home. A 1.5 tax increase is 227,472. Takes that same $16.16, increases it to $16.41, which is 25 cents or $25 per 100,000 of assessed value. 1.75 is 265,384 levy increase. Takes it from $16.16 to $16.45, 29 cents per thousand or $29. Now I'm going to go a little faster because I think I don't want everyone to fall asleep just yet. 1.95% raises the levy 295,714,32 cents per thousand of assessment or $32 per year per 100,000. 2% brings us in 303,296 in the levy increase, a total amount of money. So just because somebody's assessment changed doesn't mean we collect more money. We only get the 303,296 more, 33 cents per thousand or $33 per 100,000. 2.13 is 3.323,533,35 cents per thousand or $35 per 100,000. All of these tax increases that are being presented tonight are tax cap compliant, which means they require a voter authorization of a simple majority of 50% plus one. The tax cap simply determines the level of voter authorization for your budget. So now we're going to talk about how are we going to close the gap with the reserves? So it's projected at the end of this year that we will have 347,497 balance in our reserves at a 1% levy increase. All levels, we would have 218,123 left at the end of the year. These are our balances. And the reason that we don't use the full amount is we only use the amount that's in the budget for workers' compensation. Unemployment. This one will be requested to be unfunded, so it will go from 240,798 to 135,181. Our employee retirement contribution. That is for our support staff. We have 2,348,211 in there. And this one, you see the number changes per the scenarios. This is the reserve because we have higher costs here and a higher reserve that we would potentially decrease the usage if we raise the levy higher. So it goes to 1,798,135 and 1%. Teacher retirement contribution. Again, both of these, these costs are mandated. 399,681 balance at the end of the year, 197,313. Liability reserve for unknown liability costs, 546,307. That would remain the same. Don't have any projected cost. Tax surcery is going from 42,805, we have no known settlements yet, to 42,805. Employee benefit liability reserve. We have no known retirements. This is used for known retirements. It's the only thing I can use this fund for. And if it's not overfunded, so I cannot ever lower it without controller authorization. And they will not authorize lowering this fund unless you have it overfunded and we are not overfunded. So that will remain at 1,109,676. Repair reserve is for unknown costs. We've used it in the past to repair the Kojan. It could be used for a roof repair. A piece of a boiler goes down that wasn't in the budget, we would have used that. That will stay at 313,886 because of course, we don't know of any emergency repairs today. So our subtotal of our reserves, and these are the reserves that can be used and unfunded to balance our budget, goes from 5.3 million and the 1% budget goes down to 4.3. In a 2, 1.5% levy increase goes from 5.3 down to 4.4. And in a 1.75, it goes from 5.3 down to 4.475, which is a little higher as you can see than the 1.5. So these reserves cannot be used without voter authorization. So our capital buses and equipment. The balance projected is 1.2 million. We are asking in proposition number two to use 644,379, which in all scenarios brings us down to 570,981. Our capital for technology, we are at 667,094. We are proposing to use 349,750 for proposition number three to replace our technology equipment, which would leave us with 317,344 in all scenarios. Our capital building, this is what we use to offset our current capital project. We do not have a capital project out there for voting. Therefore, we cannot ask the voters to even utilize this fund this year. So it stays at the 725,456. So you can see our voter authorized reserves go from 2.6 million down to 1.6 in all scenarios. So when we add the subtotal from the last page to the voter authorized reserves, our total reserves go from 7.9 million to 5.9 and 1%. From 7.9 to 6 million and a 1.5. Excuse me. And from 7.9 to 6,888 and a 1.75. Excuse me. Our workers' comp, as in the last slides, stays the same, goes down to the 218,123, whether we have 1.9 for 5% levy increase. A 2% levy increase or 2.13 levy increase, excuse me a minute. Sorry, my allergies are getting the best of me. So you see in this scenario, I'm going to move quickly because my voice is giving up. I'm sorry. We're going to go, the entire employee retirement contribution is what we're going to use to balance the budget. So the balance in there gets higher as we use more levy increase. Thank you. So the teacher's retirement is staying static. The liability, we don't plan to use. The tax surcery, we don't have a use for. Employee benefit, we don't have a use for. Our repair reserve, we don't have a use for. So on a 1.95 levy increase, we're looking to take our total reserves from 5.3 down to 4.5 million. They're going to be a little bit higher and a 2% goes to 4.513. And if we use a 2.13, the maximum for a simple majority is 4.4533,311. And again, if you look here, we explained that down here, the subtotal would stay the same all the way across because again, we're going to use 644,379 to purchase buses and equipment. Proposition number three, we're hoping to use 349,750 to replace our technology infrastructure. So our total reserves are 7.9 million today. In a 1.95, they go to 6.6119,000. Or in a 2-point levy increase, they would stay at 6,126,000. Or the 2.13 increase, it would be at 6,147,000. So our remaining schedule after tonight, tomorrow I report to New York State what the decision of the board was for expenditures and level of the tax levy increase so that they can tell when they monitor our budget, we've used the correct voter authorization. And then on May 3rd, we'll have a budget hearing. And May 18th, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and the middle school, high school auditorium will be the budget vote.
Thank you. So we've got the scenarios out there from the max we could go out is 2.13%. You've got that formula of a 2% thought that that's where you maximally could go to. And then we've got the other ones where 1, 1 and 1/2, 1.75 and 1.95. Having a meeting earlier with the Finance and Audit Committee, we looked at probably the 1.95% tax increase. We feel is, is justifiable based on the current expenditures. Basically, it's going to be $32 per $100,000 tax assessment. So if you got a $200,000 house, your, your budget's going up $64. So.
I would just chime in, having sat in to that meeting with Don. The 1.95 seems to be a sweet spot where we can balance the needs of the student, the taxpayer and the employees and still maintain and even add programming in the new school year.
No, and I like the optics of it. I know, we understand that what we're allowed to levy isn't always exactly the 2%, but no matter how, I mean, this has been around the 2% for, I don't even remember how long now, but people don't always understand that 2% isn't always 2%. And if you go to the, what you're allowed by law, people are, get upset because you're over the 2%. So I think it's, like Jack said, it's a nice way to balance everything and I think it'll be easier for people to understand when it comes time to vote, that it's under the 2% and I think that's what people comprehend.
I, I, that's a good point. So another number that you guys haven't seen. So last year, property taxes accounted for 46.46% of the total budget. So basically, the property taxes were supporting 46.46% of the total school budget. Going out at 1.95%, it's now down to 45.69%. So we're asking the, the taxpayers to even support this budget less, even going up at the 1.94%. So just, you know, there's some of the things, the optics and things along those lines. That's kind of one of my measuring points of, of how much are we asking the community to support? And, you know, we're actually lighting, lightening their load by going out at the 1.94, 95%. So that's just, you know, some of the numbers that, that we've trunched through this whole thing. And I think it's a very fair budget. I think the programming that we're offering is very positive. And I think 1.95% is probably the number we should zero in on unless anybody else has, you know, think we should go either less or higher, so.
I think it's very fair.
No, it sounds like you've done your homework, all of you, and I, I trust it. So it sounds like a good number to me.
Couple of comments, if you don't mind. So, so one of the things that Mrs. Felden failed to point out, and it really surprised me because I'm proud of her and I know she's proud of her work, is, is the overall expenditures that were presented tonight are actually less than what you've seen in the past. So that's also aided in, in lessening the burden on the taxpayer. And she was able to do that because of good fiscal management within her office and, and a good fiscal year that we've had thus far. We've been, been able to pre-purchase some things that were necessary for next year, particularly that math program that we talked about. And that is a big ticket item. So thank you, Laura, and your team for being able, for, for reducing next year's expenditures by X number of dollars as well. I do think that this is an appropriate, yet in some areas, aggressive use of reserves because reserves are so important for our future in, in those specific areas. But I know that, that's something that you have your eyes on and will continue to maintain. But I know that that's something that you have your eyes on and will continue to maintain, particularly at TRS Reserve, where we know a year or two years in advance what our increase is going to be. I like everything that I heard today about balancing our student needs with our community needs. That's what, that was the basis of this entire design. Those who have paid attention to earlier meetings and heard from the administrative team about some additional needs in AIS, we've talked a lot about the shifting to at least a partial full-day UPK program, and some of the ancillary costs that go along with that. All of those things are included in this budget with really what is a minimal tax increase. So there's, there should be a lot of pride with everyone that's been involved in this development. And I know Laura and I both appreciate the support we've heard up here today.
So Mrs. Feldman, what do you need from us now? Or is it later in the... Any other questions for Mrs. Feldman? Thank you.
Do we have a request to address specific items from the consent agenda? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
All right. New business. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Kimberly English be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective May 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Billy Joe Beck be permanently appointed as a clerk typist effective May 11th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Allison McKenzie be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective May 11th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Jeffrey Cott be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective May 11th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kathleen McKinnon RN be appointed as head nurse for the district effective April 20th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kathleen J. be appointed on probation as payroll clerk effective April 25th, 2022. Salary is $23 per hour.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Lauren Carter and Kelly LaRosa be appointed as summer enrichment co-principals for summer 2022. Salary is $2,500 each.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed as elementary summer enrichment teachers effective July 5th, 2022, and ending August 5th, 2022. Salary is, as per contract, at $35.73 per hour. Claire Dunwoodie, Adriana Jimenez, Anne Priceal, Amy Sullivan, Kelsey Balin, currently on sub-list, Casey Odra Wolski, currently on sub-list, Amanda Russo, currently on sub-list, Angela Sorrow, currently on sub-list, Lisa Kaiser, not certified in New York State, Jenna Edamy Kufauer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Alicia Brown be appointed as an after-school AIS instructor effective April 20th, 2022, for two hours per week.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sue Lynn Weiberg be appointed as an after-school AIS instructor effective April 20th, 2022, for two hours per week.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mary Maxson, Director of Pupil Personnel Services, be appointed as the extended school year summer school principal. Salary is $2,500.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is the approximate position and time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. Nobody?
Nobody.
Anybody? No. Okay. Moving right along, new business resignation. Said upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Treasurer Mary Labasco be accepted effective June 30th, 2022. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Labasco for her 21 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think everybody in my office is running away to retirement, and I'm very happy for Mrs. Labasco, but very sad for us. She is an excellent treasurer. There is not a better one out there.
Agree.
Agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor, Thomas Birmingham, be accepted effective March 16th, 2022. Note, Mr. Birmingham resigned the part-time cafeteria position in order to accept the full-time school manager position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2022-2023 school budget and the amount of $33,836,483 be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question. This is at 1.95% levy increase, correct?
That's why I was asking the question earlier, so...
So should we state that on there, 1.95?
Yeah. So basically, we're approving the budget for $33,836 at a 1.95% tax levy increase. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Budget passed. A budget approved. Budget approved, sorry about that.
He's saying a little, to the future. Yes. That was good, Dan. I do too. Gosh, I don't know. All right. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, materials including teacher manuals, supplemental workbooks, and core workbooks from the Go Math 2015 program be declared access and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. This program will no longer be used starting in September 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the into-math program by Hope Mifflin used for a math pilot program be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. The pilot program will not be used moving forward.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items from the family at Consumer Science Department be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. 1972 Amana Deluxe Electric Range asset tag, that number, valued at $375 with replacement cost of $750. A 2005 Amana Deluxe Electric Range serial number, following, valued at $275 with replacement cost of $550.
Second.
Any discussion? 1972 is more than a 2005, but I don't know, that might be an antique. Are we allowed to dispose of that?
I can't believe it's still working.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the district goals amended March 30th, 2022, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
I'd like to report to the Board of Education that the New York State allocation given to Eden Central School of the federal money for after-school and summer learning programs has been approved, so we can begin to set up and spend those funds. We received our final FEMA payment for the pandemic of $9,591.08. They reimbursed the district for extraordinary costs during the pandemic. And then just, I was reading today, researching today, the U.S. Labor Department released on April 12th, the annual core inflation rate is 6.5% for the 12 months ended March of '22. And for that 6.5% inflation rate, this Board of Education is setting a budget at 3.67% increase. Kudos to this board. That's all I have.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the Board of Education and the district's administrative team for working collaboratively to establish new and updated district goals. As you know, it's my belief that district-level goals should be established through a big picture or a global perspective. The goals shared this evening certainly reflect that ideology. As we move forward, it's my expectation that building, departmental, and personal goals will be aligned to those adopted district goals, and the ones that you adopted this evening are certainly written with that global perspective to allow that to happen. So thank you for that, and I appreciate all of your work and input. Again, thank you to Mrs. Feldman and the Board Finance Committee for their work in making recommendations for the 22-23 school year budget. Our budget development process continues to evolve and maintains a focus on supporting student achievement at all levels, and the comments I made earlier certainly are reflective of that as well. I do want to make a comment about summer programming. You approved some administrators and some teachers for our summer enrichment program at the elementary level, primary and elementary level. You also approved Mary Maxson for the extended school year program. I want to make special note that the extended school year program is actually going to be housed at North Collins this summer, so I appreciate North Collins District partnering with us. As you know, and as I'll talk about in a minute, we're rolling into construction season, and there are so many unknowns with this construction project about where and when and how, that it made most sense to make sure we had a secure location for our most needy students. And the secondary level, again, with a lot of work happening at the, at the middle school and high school, Mr. Servoni and Mr. Lyons made the suggestion that we actually partner with BOSI's this summer through a program that's being held at Iroquois to make sure that our students still have summer opportunities to, you know, improve on or pass their courses. I'm glad that we're able to do that, and we're able to fund it as well. And thank you to Mrs. Banco for her work in making sure that transportation will be appropriately utilized this summer. That doesn't mean it's going to happen every summer, but this summer for those students that need that extra enrichment in those areas. As I said a moment ago, we're fully in the spring season, as evidenced by the recent weather and the late evening email I received yesterday, they encouraged me to call for a snow day today. I was actually online waiting to go through customs when I got that email, and I thought it was going to call for a snow day from very far away. We know, or at least hope the weather will improve, and I do know that our drivers, our coaches, our athletes, Mr. Iwanko and Billings and Grounds Crew will continue to modify and adjust with the elements so that school and outdoor activities can continue in earnest. Yeah, so get some sleep, Mr. Iwanko. I'm sure he'll be making more adjustments tomorrow, so thank you for your efforts there. And again, spring's also when our capital construction work gets underway. Contractors have been on campus and will continue to do so as they set up staging areas in the primary areas of construction, so you'll start to see some of those changes in this building for sure, and certainly in the middle school, high school very shortly. I want to thank Mr. Bliss for arranging for the installation of new LED lighting in the middle school, high school gymnasium. This is actually going to be a part of this project, and through discussion about this project and previous projects, it was discovered that we already owned the lighting. We simply needed to have it installed, and we were able to have it installed in the gym at the middle school and high school for a reduced rate from what was being quoted to us for the project. So hopefully, the lighting looks great, as good as we hoped. Much brighter, much cleaner, whiter light, right? Good, excellent. So I look forward to stopping up there and seeing it, so thank you to Mr. Bliss for making that happen. And I also want to say, and I know I get more excited every, every meeting as we are a little bit more normal, but I really am looking forward to springtime traditions and celebrations that will be taking place over the next several weeks, of course, culminating graduation. Each day that we move forward and beyond recent restrictions really brings more confidence and excitement for those future celebrations, so thank you.
I know there's not a student here, but is there any report that anybody sent, or... Okay. So, Board Report Roundtable, anybody? Okay. BOSI's component vote date, Wednesday morning, April 27th, 2022, at 7:30 AM in the district office conference room.
I will not be in attendance. I will be in Nashville on that day.
I'm, I'm supposed to be at work by then, but if we don't have enough, I can...
How about Jen? It's next Wednesday.
Wednesday.
7:30.
I should be able to make it.
It's going to be this short.
I know.
Like, two minutes.
Two minutes. It'll take you longer to drive here than the actual meeting.
Oh, okay, I could be the fourth to that. Have we got Alan?
I mean, as long as we're buzzing in and buzzing out, I'm good.
If you're, if you're here any longer than that, it's on you.
Well, if you have food, then I might be a little...
All right, so we have a call.
No, no, he's going to be at home. So, so just to clarify, Alan, you can be at the meeting here.
Yeah, as long as it starts at 7:30 and ends at like 7:35, I'll be 21.
We will be very fast.
We've got it from 7:30 to 7:34.
We've done that, we've done it, like, three minutes, we can do it. Okay. We have enough, right? Okay. Okay, Alan, you're on. The annual budget hearing Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, 7:00 PM, Eden Elementary Auditorium. The annual budget vote Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, 9:00 AM through 9:00 PM, Eden Middle School, High School Auditorium foyer. And the next regular Board of Education meeting is May 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. Now we...
Can I, um, I do actually know one student thing, though.
Okay.
Ms. Lyons, am I correct on this? The 17th of May is the Powderpuff Game?
I was asked to volunteer at it, and I was told the 17th, so that's what I have in my calendar.
14th is a Saturday.
Yeah, it's the 17th.
It's the Board of Day Vote.
Yeah.
The same day as the budget vote.
Yeah.
How nice. So we can all come and vote. Perfect. Anything else?
No.
Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Second.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Do we have to move?
Dan?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Budget passed, motion passed.
Budget...
[laughing] [music][1789.91]